Welcome, everyone, to the Homewood City Council meeting for February 28th, 2022, our last day of the month and when I've been told that I'm running a meeting tonight. So, looking forward to that. I hope you'll bear with me. I'd like to first ask, we have from Christ Fellowship Pastor Shepard, who will provide us our invocation. As we always say, God will full country. So after that, we'll remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Would you pray with me? Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for your faithfulness to us. We thank you for the wonderful free country in which we live. Lord, I thank you for the dedicated men and women who are here tonight. And, Lord, we ask that as they gather together to think and to plan and to discuss what could be good for the city that you have, in your divine grace, allowed us to live in. We ask that you would help what is done here to reward and bless righteousness and punish wickedness so that people made in your image here and everywhere can thrive and flourish in the world that you created. So, Lord, you help us as servants of yours to steward that well, and we ask that everything here tonight be done to your honor and glory. Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Shepard. Need to get you on our rotation. So as I said, we called the meeting to order. If we can have roll call, please.
Counselor Gwaltney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andres?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt. Looks like everybody's here but the council press.
Okay, okay.
But you have a quorum.
We have 10. We have a quorum.
The pro tem's in charge.
All right, wonderful. The minutes for Valentine's Day, the 14th, have been distributed. Is there a motion that we dispense with a reading of the minutes and approve them as distributed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Nelms. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign, and passes 10 to zero. All right, do we have any board vacancies tonight? I don't believe we do, but speak up. And if there are some that need to be handled, please get with Ms. Salter. Any additions to that?
We do have a place coming up, just for everybody to help us keep an eye on us. On the Board of Education, I don't remember which board, but y'all had to point that out. So I'll be announcing that on the next meeting because by code, that one has to be appointed in April before they don't take office till June.
Okay.
We're not ready to meet yet, I'm just letting y'all know.
Okay.
To be, to be...
And that's Ward 3, yep.
It is Ward 3, okay.
Yep.
Well, so it'll be on coming soon.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you for that. Okay. There are a few additions to the agenda, so let me go through those. I've asked Mrs. Smith to provide reports from finance tonight. So adding to the agenda, 020521, request to consider replacement of the train chiller for City Hall building, brought to us by Berkeley Squires and Counselor Smith. We're also, and this is being added to other, let's see, to...
Old Business.
Old Business, yeah. This is going under Old Business. Okay, all of these are going under Old Business. 020222, request for consideration of FY 2122 budget amendments coming to us from Mr. Burgett and Ms. Salter. So that'll also go to Old Business. 040122, request to add public parking at the old Homewood Police Station on 29th Avenue South in the Bay, coming to us from Counselor Andres. That's also going to Old Business. And then, lastly, we have 220122. This is a request for consideration of Forest Brook Traffic Calming Project on Forest Brook Drive from Forest Brook Circle to West Oxmore Road via Shades Glen Drive and Delkers Drive, coming to us from our counselors in Ward 2, Counselors Alamon and Wolverton. So that, those are all of the additions to the agenda. I will make a point, we, as you can see, looking at the agenda, we have lots of public hearings tonight. So I would ask that we establish some type of time limit. I say five minutes for each one speaking. I think that should be fine. And I'm sure some will be much shorter than that. But since we have a number of public hearings, I would ask that we handle it that way. Is there, are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I will ask, I'm sorry, I meant to ask you this. As far as the two public hearings that came out of Planning and Development, do we need, does that go on the referral?
They're already on there.
They're already on the agenda.
That's right, thank you.
Yeah, they're already on the agenda, but if we miss one, please let me know.
There are so many, but we'll work through that.
So is there a, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Okay, that's moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mr. Gwaltney. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign, and passes 10 to zero. Okay, so we are now ready to move. There's nothing on the consent agenda, so we'll move right over that. And we go into the Old Business agenda. 090122, public hearing set for February 28th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. For consideration to rezone 2916 Linden Avenue from C1 to C4, the applicant Stray Center Investment Company, Daniel and Chase Stray Center, to facilitate new commercial development. And this came out of the Planning Commission with a vote of 6 to 2. First of all, let's get a report, this is going to be one of many reports, tonight from Mrs. Andres.
Yes, the committee just met this evening, and a motion was made to send out without recommendation by Counselor Nelms. It was seconded by Counselor Sims, and it passed 5 to 0.
Okay, 5 to 0 without recommendation. So with that, I will open the public hearing. And anyone from the public that would like to speak, we would love to invite you to speak. And if you can sign the sheet, do we have a sheet up there?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, you can just sign that. And I appreciate you coming first, yeah.
That's what, I'm Chase Stray Center. Thank y'all so much for meeting with me before. Just here to answer any other questions y'all might have on the rezoning.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we handled most of those in committee, but if there's anything you'd like to highlight, you know, we went over this in committee. But if you'd like to provide just a quick overview of what the request is, that would be great.
Yes, so we are located on Linden Avenue, and we run up right on the cusp of the C4 zoning. And we currently are zoned for C1, which makes it only office space. What we're trying to get is C4 that will allow retail. And we've also, the person diagonal right on the end of the Christopher Building, Pinehurst Golf Shop, is wanting to come in and put simulators in this new space that we're getting ready to renovate. So that's kind of our clientele right now. And I think the way it's a forward-facing lot, it's more conducive to retail than some other spaces, or especially office space.
Okay.
Brian, could you put the picture of the actual building? Thank you.
Yeah, there we go.
And then the new building, which we've already got planned out, the front part will be torn down, and then we're putting around $600,000 in renovations into it, using the old foundation to kind of get grandfathered in a lot of the building codes because they've changed a lot, and then going off that foundation to the back. So it's really going to look a lot like the Christopher Building across the street.
Okay, great. Okay, and then is there any, Mr. Smith or Mr. Pugh, anything you want to add to the report here? There you are. Okay, okay, any other public comments? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. And any comments from the council? Any questions, comments?
Oh, comment that I think that it looks beautiful and appreciate the upgrading of the building and would move to approve the rezone.
Okay, great.
Oh, sorry, it's rezoning, I'm sorry.
Not yet, you need a first reading, so I'll ask Mr. Kendrick for the first reading.
Sure. It's an ordinance to amend Section 1602 of the City of Homewood Ordinance entitled zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city. Whereas the Planning Commission has favorably recommended that the City Council consider the removal of certain property described herein from its C1 zoning classification into rezone the property to C4 Central Business District zoning district. Whereas the Council has determined and set the public hearing for February 28th, 2022, now therefore be ordained by the City as follows. That following described property described in Exhibit A with street address 2916 Linden Avenue, be in the same as hereby taken out of the Homewood City zoning C1 Office Building District and rezone to the City of Homewood C4 Central Business District zoning. Section 2, that from and after the act of this ordinance, if the use is applicable to C4 zoning district shall be, shall be applied to this property. Section 3, that February 28th is the time and place for the public hearing. Section 4, that the Council, the City Clerk is given notice of the public hearing as required by law. Section 5, if any part of provisioned ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, all other parts remain in full force and effect. Section 6, ordinance become effective immediately upon adoption by the City Council and approval by the mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. Now I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
I would love to make that motion.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mrs. Andres makes that motion for unanimous consent, seconded by Mrs. Smith.
We'll be doing a bunch tonight.
Ms. Salter, if you'll call the roll.
Yes, sir, we'll be doing a bunch tonight. Counselor Gwaltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
And Counselor Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously, 10 to 0. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mrs. Andres, seconded by Mr. Harden.
This is ordinance 2824.
Ordinance 2824, okay, great.
Counselor Gwaltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andres?
Yes.
And Counselor Harden?
Yes.
Okay, great, that ordinance 2824 passes 10 to 0. Thank you for that. All right, moving on, item number 100122, public hearing set for tonight, February 28th, for consideration to rezone 3006 Cook Street from C2 to R7. John Abernathy is the applicant, BRE Cook Street LLC. The Planning Commission here had a vote of 7 to 1, there was one absent. So favorable recommendation of the rezone. Do we, Mrs. Andres, if you could provide a report from Public Planning and Development?
Yes, the committee met, I don't even remember what day this was, this was...
This was the 7th.
7th of February, okay, thank you.
Those were actually January 24th for you.
Or was it?
Gosh, okay.
Okay, I'm confused.
Was it 2022? Exactly, okay.
1/24/22.
All right, thank you. The committee met back on the 24th of January and voted 3 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Gwaltney and seconded by Counselor Sims.
Glad you could remember that.
Thank you.
From that far back. Okay, great, thank you for that report from committee. At this point, I will open the public hearing. So are there any comments? And if you can just sign in, please.
John Abernathy, 303 Ascot Road in Homewood, representing Blackwater. Have a short presentation, but I will keep it short because I showed us a development committee, and sure, I heard your comment about the agenda. Brian, I'll raise my hand, thank you. So this is our property off of Cook Street, it accesses just off Cook Street. And this slide is just to show you the variety of uses that are in this, from single-family residential to office to R5 apartment. And some are in their correct zoning, some are grandfathered. There's office on residential, and there's residential on office zonings. So it's a very big mix between there. This is existing property on Cook Street. And this is a survey, and I'll show you in a moment, the picture of, from a streetscape, how it slopes from one end to the other, that this shows just the slopes of the property. This is the C2 zoning on the west side of Cook Street. And below us is R5 apartment, and above us is C1 office being used as apartment. So our request is to downzone this from C2 to R7. Originally, we had a different plan where we were going to go to the BZA for setback variances. And after going through Planning Commission, we changed the plan a little bit. And are going to work within the R7 zoning setbacks, and so we will not be going to BZA. The star is our property, the blue is, are the right-of-way easements that run behind us from firefighter in Oxmore. The orange to the right is Cook Street, and that's where we'll be accessing from, not from any of the blue, even though they do touch this property. And I'll show you that in a moment. This is our site plan, again, to the right is Cook Street, and that's where our parking will come and everything. There's a light line you may not be able to see, but it's the setback line, 40-foot setback line for R7. So everything will be green to the west of that. Here's a couple of, I had some questions about the townhome elevation, so we're just going to be looking for something low country, and that will be the design scheme. On the left is a, our units are about 15 to 16 feet wide, and so on the left, that gives you a perspective, because that is a smaller townhome unit. R7 zoning requires a minimum 1,200 square feet in the unit itself. And so at 15 feet wide, the left side, that'll show you kind of what a perspective of the first floor would look like. This is a floor plan, just to show you primarily on the second floor, you'll see there's two bedrooms. So you can see in that type of unit, in that depth, this is what would fit, two bedrooms. This is prior to those red apartments being painted and cleaned up, but this is our, our location. And then from a streetscape, it steps down at Cook Street, and you see the house on the left, and that's where our units would step down. We have six located together, and they would also step down either every two or every one. We're working on that, depending upon what happens here tonight. And that is it, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments from the public? Welcome.
Hello. I'm Brock Tompkins, 702 Belmont Road in Homewood. And I own the property directly to the west of the property in question. And as I met with the previous committees before, the biggest issue we have, and I think more than one of the adjacent property owners sent in letters voicing this, is the lack of parking. Where he's turned the property, shrunk the units, there's still six units with 12 parking spaces. And they're going to be rentals, and there is, every property that is adjacent to that has parking for their business. And it's business parking, everybody's got signs up, and parking's still an issue. So we're creating, and the units to the north are six units as well, and they have 16 parking spaces. I went and counted them because he just asphalted and he just painted. So he's got 16 parking spaces for six units. That addresses his parking problem. And I think he might have been one that sent in a letter too. But we're going to six units on that property with 12 parking spaces. So there's no additional parking for any visitors, which is going to encroach on all the property owners in any direction that you go for parking from that site. And that is the only concern that I have in the opposition to the, to the rezoning in question. If it was a business, that's fine, there'd be plenty of parking for it, but we're trying to put six houses and 12 parking spaces on that piece of property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other comments?
Good evening, my name's Nathan Gray. My wife and I are the new business owners that have recently bought Dr. Friday's dental office. So the address is 1905 Oxmore Road. So we would be kind of next door to those apartment buildings that have just been painted white. We have a plan to be growing Dr. Friday's practice, not, not in space, but in patient base. We're thrilled to get to take on his legacy. Our dental office now is named White Oak Family Dentistry. It's actually named for about 120-year-old white oak tree that used to stand on the corner of the property, and it was adjacent between our property and where the apartments would go, which I think is interesting. But we have just the same concern as John. I didn't get a chance to send in a letter. We purchased the business February 1st, so I'm, would be the new face on the block. And our parking lot would be directly adjacent. And we're already extremely tight on parking. Our staff actually parks up front, and then the patients double park behind us because we're not planning to go anywhere for the day. But if someone was either a resident or a visitor at one of these apartments and parked behind, then either a patient might not be able to get in or a staff member may not be able to get out. We also leased to a dental lab downstairs that they have about four cars as well. And so, you know, it's, it's tight any given day of the week. That being said, we don't have any animosity toward John or the development. I think it would be an obvious improvement to, to the area, be beautiful, but concerned there. John, do you, a question for you would be if there would be any sort of wall that, where, you know, people would not be able to get in and out between the, between the adjacent parking? How would that be managed on your property boundary?
In the only way, I guess, if you, if you'd like to care to answer that, that's fine.
I'm glad to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
It's early, we still haven't received any zoning to do this, but our plan is to put a fence, fence in the property. I don't know if you could bring that back up, Brian, but these units will have, or planning for them to have outside space. So we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't want them to be able to go off the property. So we probably would have a fence around the entire back, to fence in that area, to keep off people from the other areas. Apparently, there's a parking issue from, from coming onto this property as well. And it'd be the, kind of the same, same thought process back and forth.
Can that be a proffer?
Yeah, would that be a proffer that you would?
Sure.
Okay, that you would include, okay.
Would agree with that.
Okay.
What is the proffer, I'm sorry?
To put a fence around the property?
The boundary?
Around the rear, around the, the sides and the back?
Yes, around the rear, we wouldn't want to extend it past the fence. We wouldn't want to extend it the full length of the property. I don't know if that'd be as attractive, but certainly to the front of the units, maybe.
We just need to have some understanding of what your proffer is, so I can put in the ordinance.
I guess I would proffer what is being requested of me.
To separate you from the properties behind you, from the, what Dr. Friday's new owner, I'm sorry. It's grubby.
Dr. Gray, right.
Dr. Friday, Dr. Gray. To, to address his point, which you did mention, actually, when we, the last time you were here, I can't remember if it was Planning Commissioner or the Planning and Development Committee, but you did mention fencing off from their property. So you demarc your property from theirs, so people are not migrating from their property, parking on their property and migrating to your property.
Correct, yes, we're agreeable with that.
Mr. Pugh, why don't you come help us here for a second? So would it be the north, the north perimeter, west and south?
Why don't we?
I'm confused on where potentially...
Is the question, where can a fence go?
Yes.
Okay, so if you could bring that, so the fence ordinance will allow a fence to extend no, no further than beyond the front line.
The front building line.
The front building line.
Right.
So I mean, conceivably, he could start at the front building line, come around the side, around the back.
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay.
I'd agree.
Okay.
I was going to agree with the recommendation, but that's fine.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that in a minute. Okay, we're still under public comment? Any other public comment?
I'm Carolyn Herr, 3108 Overton Drive. I think what Mr. Abernathy has designed is beautiful. It's certainly, it's certainly a big improvement over what is there now. But I would just ask the council to remember that the one thing we learned through all the rezoning in the last go-round was that the citizens really do not approve of more apartments for Homewood. You know, that was just made very clear, so I'm just asking you to remember that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kerr. All right, any other comments? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And now, comments from the council. So obviously, we have the proffer, so there's probably, we'd like to accept that as part of this, but are there other comments?
I had a question as to what the target population is for the units? In terms of college students, families? Yeah.
I don't know that we have a specific, I mean, we, we have small units, so it's at the sizes that's there that can be fit. You're talking about 600 square feet of living, maybe upstairs? So you're talking about very small bedrooms. So would it be, it'd be possibly a college student? I don't know how many college students right now live in downtown Homewood or the area. But it could be college students, it also could be retirees, it could be, you know, empty nesters, it could be all manner of things. It would be small for a family.
Do you have a, a, an amount that you're thinking of charging?
We don't have a final amount, because obviously, every month you go, the construction costs continue to go up. So we're chasing that a little bit. At one point, we were hoping to be in the 2,500 range. I guess when we, if we were able to get approved and we're able to get to that point, we'll see where construction costs are.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Abernathy, I have a question. Are there, do you have other options for this property? Or is it just for what you've presented?
This is the only option today, yes. It's not a, I mean, it's zone C2 retail, but our opinion is it's not a retail property.
Right.
It's not a storefront property for retail.
But for the residential property that you're considering, do you have other ideas if this didn't work?
No, we did not, no. It didn't fit an R5 zoning. I think we explored that a little bit at the Planning Commission, because on both sides are R5, an R5 zoning and an R5 use on both sides. But it didn't fit that category.
So I heard you mentioned that... So I heard you mentioned that you may consider downsizing the actual units, if it came to that?
No, you didn't hear that from us.
No?
I think I used the word downsizing when I was talking about the zoning classification. Zoning classification.
Oh, okay.
From a more intense commercial to a less intense residential.
No thoughts on fewer units, or?
I can't downsize them anymore, as far as square footage, they're at the minimum that's required in this zoning.
Okay, and I had one question. And the concern, obviously, has been on, has been part of Homewood and on this council for a long time. It's the, the effect on the school system and things like that. Is there any thought on providing it to people age 55 or higher, older?
Not exclusively, no. There's not.
Because that would solve your problem of all the concerns that you have from the council. That would, that's what I've seen, is some creative, creativity in terms of developments like that. To know that retirees that are going to be in your units and not to the school system.
Well, again, I just want to stress, it's 600 square feet there, so each bedroom's 10 by 10. I mean, this isn't a, let's bring two or three kids into Homewood type of unit. It's a very small unit, is what I stress out.
I'm just sharing you what the concerns that have occurred over the years on the council.
I understand.
Okay, other, yes, sir?
So, and I, it sounds like, it sounds like the design, so you're the developer, the investor, correct?
We own the property, yes.
Continuing to own and then just rent, that's the?
That's correct.
That's the plan, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I hear Walter. You know, size doesn't always limit population, just, you know, by virtue of it being small. Some people are willing to go small to get some of the amenities here in town. But I guess, I guess my only other question was, if there was any thought of, obviously, you've got, you've got a plan before us that's six units.
Right.
I don't know if there was ever a thought of less units but more bedrooms, something like that, that might help alleviate some of that concern as well. And I'll just be honest, I, I've been on the council for five years now, and we had a similar development in terms of six units on a, what I think most people would deem a pretty small parcel. And just kind of the optics, but also the limited parking. And it's in a place that parking's already a premium, as well as, as has already been mentioned tonight. So I guess, just if you could kind of speak to that, obviously, you've probably run some metrics and have reasons for making that decision, but.
Yeah, the Planning Commission discouraged bigger units. They didn't want any three-bedroom units. So, we originally were thinking about doing larger units, and it was not well-received at all. And so, that, we actually came back later and downsized the units to much smaller footprints, smaller bedrooms, and that.
That's what the number increased, the number of units increased?
No, it didn't increase, it was always six. But they just were not, there were six before and six now. We actually decreased the square footage of the units greatly. I can't remember right offhand, but let's say each one of them was 800 units, now 800, 1,800 square feet, now they're 1,200 square feet. So the, the square footage on the property went down greatly. And so that was to address a lot of their concerns about not having the ability to have three bedrooms. Yeah.
All right, other comments from the council?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a couple of things. One, there was reference about a couple of letters submitted. Were those to the Planning Commission, or are those on record here for council?
The only letter that I received that the only gave us was the letter from Councilor Tomlinson, that's the only thing I've seen.
Okay, correct. Okay, I hadn't seen that one, so I just. Oh, thanks.
I'm sorry, I got it this weekend, didn't have a chance to see him on outside it back there.
I just wanted to, thanks, I just want to make sure that I had the information that was referenced. And, and a lot of people seem to reference the parking as the biggest issue, you know, the design and as far as the multifamily aspect, on the, on the property. I think, you know, it's a small-scale development compared to, you know, a larger multifamily complex. And I think it fits really well. I mean, I don't have major concerns about that. I think that if it's families who move in, you know, who pour their money into Homewood so their kids can go to a school district, I'm fine with that. And I think if it's, you know, seniors who move in, and that's who it's marketed for, then, then, you know, I look at zero-entry design and accessibility in those units, you know, ultimately depending on what works best. You know, for you and the corporation moving forward as far, as far as how to market that. But from the parking, for these townhomes, you've got two parking spaces per unit. And I guess, Wyatt, for this zoning classification, is that, is there a ratio for that? Does this? Two per unit, so it does meet, it does meet the ordinance? Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Other questions from the council? Okay, we'll go ahead and have our first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to further amend, ordinance 1602, the title of zoning ordinance and zoning map of the City of Homewood, where as the Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation that the property described herein be rezoned from C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to City of Homewood R7 Attached Dwelling Unit District. Whereas, the council has determined and found it necessary to have a public hearing on February the 28th, now therefore be ordained by the City Council as follows. That the following described property located at 3006 Cook Street, be rezoned from its current zoning C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to the City of Homewood R7 Attached Dwelling District. Section 2, that after the enactment of this ordinance, the uses applicable to R7 zoning district will be, will be applied to this property as relates to its uses. Section 3, that February the 28th at 6 o'clock PM is the time and place for a public hearing, at which time, the public will be afforded an opportunity to be heard. Section 4, the clerk is given notice as required by law for this hearing. Section 5, be part of provisions, the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional. All other parts of provisions remain in full force and effect. Section 6, that the ordinance become effective immediately upon adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayor is otherwise becoming law.
And Mr. Kendrick, the, so the fence would be the proffer that would be part of that, too?
Yes, sir. The proffer is, I understand, install a fence on both sides of the property and along the front, the back building, property line until the front building.
That's my understanding, yeah, okay, great. Okay, do we have a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Andrews seconded that. We'll call a roll on this one.
Yeah, can you do close the public hearing, didn't you? Did, I missed that, though, you closed the public hearing?
Yes, I closed the public hearing a long time ago.
Okay, you did, yes, you did it. I was just making sure, I missed, I thought I missed. Okay.
Having so much fun, yes.
All right, Nam, can I say it, Councilor Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Neils?
Yes.
Councilor Andreas?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous.
I would make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second, that passes 10 to 0.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so now you're moving to approve.
Now I'll move to approve, yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walton.
Okay, Councilor Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Neils?
Yes.
Councilor Andreas?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Abstained.
Okay, so that's a 9, 0, and 1 abstention, that passes ordinance 2825. Okay? All right. Next, we have 110122, public hearing set for tonight, again, for consideration of rezonating 2821 Central Avenue from M1 Manufacturing District to C4. This is City of Homewood Taco Partners LLC. Those lots comprising the subject property were unintentionally included in the rezoning of the original parcel in December of 2014. The Planning Commission on this one voted 8 to 0 for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. Ms. Andrews, a report from P and D.
Yes, we met on January 24th, and the committee voted 3 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Councilor Walton and seconded by Councilor Sims.
Okay, thank you for that report, Ms. Andrews. We will now open the public hearing. For this item, we welcome any comments. Even from you, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chair, around, excuse me, 2014.
You okay?
Sorry, I was having.
I was having the same issues.
Okay, perfect.
Everybody's good now. Around 2014, the city rezoned the District Brewing property to M1, and unintentionally, the legal description was written to include where Little Donkey used to be and where Office Interior Elements is now. So that, those two parcels were both rezoned to M1 unintentionally. And now we're trying to correct that error and rezone the parcel with, that used to be the Little Donkey and Interior Elements, the one circled in red on the screen, back to C4.
Which is what they were before.
Which is what they were.
What they were before, okay. Thank you for that. Mr. Smith, I appreciate that. Okay, any other public comments? Welcome to, come forth. All right, seeing none, hearing none, I close the public hearing. Did you get that, Ms. Salter? All right, so we close the public hearing, comments? Well, I just closed the public hearing, but I'm, I want to let you come forth. You know, I'm the man of procedure, but, you know, come on up.
I just, it's just to be easy, easy. I own the adjacent property behind there, and I just want to make sure, I have an easement in front of that property, which is 40 feet by 80 for parking and whatever, okay? I just want to make sure that don't affect me, as far as.
You sign in, sir.
And if you can just sign in?
Yeah, Ken Williams.
Do you want, you want to come up again, Mr. Smith?
Sure.
That's my concern. This easement I have there in front of that building, like 40 feet by 80, you know, for parking in front of the, for the brewery. This doesn't affect that, does it? Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
A rezoning wouldn't affect that.
It wouldn't affect that at all, yeah. Okay, wonderful, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing again, so. Okay, we're closed, so any, any comments from council? Hearing none, Mr. Kendrick, first reading?
Yes, there's an ordinance to further amend, amend, ordinance 1602, entitled zoning ordinance and zoning map, where as the Planning Commission has favorably recommended, the rezoning of the property described herein from its current zoning classification, M1 Light Manufacturing District to City of Homewood C4 Central Business District. Whereas, this council has determined to set a public hearing on February the 28th, 2022, now therefore be ordained by the City Council as follows. That the following described property located at 2821 Central Avenue, be in the same as hereby rezoned from its current zoning, M1 Light Manufacturing, to C4 Central Business District. Section 2, that the uses, after the adoption of this, the uses permitted on the property be controlled by C4 zoning district as defined in the zoning ordinance. Section 3, that February the 28th, at 6 o'clock PM is the time and place for a public hearing, at which time all listed parties may be heard. Section 4, that the city clerk is given notice for the public hearing as required by law. Section 5, any party provisions declared to be unconstitutional invalid. All other parts remain in full force and effect. Section 6, ordinance become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council and the mayor, or its approval, or as otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
So moved.
Can move by Mr. Walton, seconded by Mrs. Smith. Ms. Salter, if you'll call a roll?
Councilor Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Neils?
Yes.
Councilor Andreas?
Yes.
Councilor Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 9 to 0. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
They've moved by Mrs. Neils, and is that Mr. Walton, seconded that, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Walton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilor Gier?
Yes.
Councilor Alamon?
Yes.
Councilor Wolverton?
Yes.
Councilor Sims?
Yes.
Councilor Jones?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Neils?
Yes.
Councilor Andreas?
Yes.
And Councilor Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that passes 9, 1, 9 to 1. Ordinance 20.
He didn't have signed, he.
Oh, I thought, I heard a no over there. Everybody was yes, okay, okay, 10 to 0, perfect. I could have sworn I heard a, a no over there. Okay, 10 to 0, that passes 2826, thank you for keeping me straight, that passes, so we'll move on. 120122, public hearing continued for, from February the 14th at 6:00 PM for consideration to amend the final development plan at 2727 18th Street South and 1817 27th Avenue South. The applicant is Homewood Hotel LLC, Homewood Hotel LLC and MAM Investments, to update the plan to reflect as-built conditions. The Planning Commission met on this and had an 8 to 0 approval for a favorable recommendation of the amended development plan. So, Mr. Pugh, or no, before you go, a report from Planning and Development, Ms. Andrews?
Yes, the committee met on January 24th and voted 3 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Councilor Walton and seconded by Councilor Sims.
Thank you for that report. And we're not going to open the public hearing, because it was already opened, and so we're just continuing it now. So if you can go ahead and provide some information here for us?
Absolutely, just a quick rundown. The event that triggered this amendment to the Valley Hotel Final Development Plan was the rezoning of the property formerly known as Wolf Camera to C4A. So this plan depicts the development without that property, which is now Edgar's. And it also depicts any sort of real-world adjustments that were made during construction. And those adjustments are as follows. One, a smaller footprint. The original development had a ground floor footprint of 19,265 square feet. This amendment shows the actual 19,110 square foot ground floor footprint as constructed. Number two, a smaller total square footage. Original plan had 102,461 square feet. As amended, it shows a 98,522 square feet. The third adjustment is the parking arrangement. The original plan called for a total of 211 spaces to be provided. The amended plan also calls for 211, the only difference being the locations of those spaces within the development. And there's a note added on this plan that calls for signage to be provided, which identifies the remote lot as Valley Hotel Remote Parking. And the last item is signage, the building signage is updated to reflect changes that passed through the Planning Commission on April 6, 2021.
Okay, thank you for that report, appreciate that. Okay, we'll open up for comments from the public. Yes, sir, Mr. Moran.
Good evening, I'm Mike Moran, 402 Office Park Drive, Suite 150, Birmingham 35223. To add to what Wyatt said earlier, I wanted to make it clear that even though the development plan would be, Edgar's would be removed from the mixed-use development plan, the 211 parking spaces required of me remains intact. And in an effort to try to reduce any impact on the public parking, I've entered into cross-parking agreements between Edgar's, myself, as it pertains. cross-parking agreements between Edgar's, myself, as it pertains to Edgar's, Little Donkey and Rodney Scott, that if at any time, even though the parking is controlled by the hotel, if the parking is not used by the hotel, on a temporary basis, the retail users in those three locations can park there in order to help alleviate any demand on the on-street parking.
Great.
Questions?
I know there was signage, Mr. Pugh mentioned it, going up for the overflow lot. Have those signs already been put up?
The sign has been put up. I had understood it was one sign. If the council would like more signs erected, we will certainly do that.
Would you be amenable to putting up a second sign?
Of course.
Okay, that'd be great.
I have a question. Have you had any complaints from people visiting the hotel with parking?
Not the first one.
Ms. Gier, you had a.
Well, actually, I just thought of a different one. So have you actually had any large events yet at the hotel?
I'm pleased to say we have had numerous occurrences where the hotel has been fully occupied and we've had significant number of large events in the ballrooms, weddings, wedding receptions and everything. And again, there's been no complaints.
Okay, and then the shared parking agreement that you were just talking about relates to the, the new parking area that is being designated.
It relates Edgar's has a portion in the parking behind the hotel where it has rights, if not used by the hotel, to park. Rodney Scott and Little Donkey have rights behind their property. It's controlled by the hotel, but if unused by the hotel, they have a right to park there. And again, there's been no complaints that I've heard about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and let's continue, we'll, we'll have more comments from the public and if there are additional questions, would you be okay to answer those?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Any other, yeah?
Counsel, my name's Scott Bryant. Have a business in Homewood Cypress Partners, 1831 29th Avenue South. Live here at SoHo and I'm here also representing the SoHo Homeowners Association. And in lieu of what has been said about the changes to the final development plan, I'd like to start with the parking and. You know, this process started in 2017 to get a final development plan approved for this project. And here we are, five years later in 2022, still trying to get a final development plan approved. And what I've given you are the parking agreements that are made by and between Edgar's, Rodney Scott and Little Donkey. There's a recorded easement, which is the first page, of the 24 spaces that are out of the hotel parking lot. On page two, you see the site plan of the parking court, that the whole orientation of the parking lot's been changed, those parking spaces, those 63 parking spaces are now for the Little Donkey, which y'all refer to as the remote overflow, whatever you want to call it, lot. At the end of the day, the hotel's required to have 211 spaces. 63 have been given away, or let's just call it 41, but the on-streets too, have been given away to Little Donkey and Rodney Scott per the lease. And additionally, the 24 spaces that are coming out of the lot, the main parking lot, so that takes the 211 down to 148. It's clearly evident that yes, C4A does not require that a restaurant have parking, but what restaurant is gonna lease space if it doesn't have parking? So at the end of the day, these parking spaces for the remote lot are not for the hotel use only. Therefore, the restaurants, as exhibited by the building plan, what was submitted to the council and the planning commission and to the building department. So the reality is, there's 148 parking spaces dedicated to the hotel because if Edgar's uses their 24 and the 63 are used by Little Donkey, then where are the 211 for the hotel? Hotel has an occupancy level of 1,665 per Homewood's certificate of occupancy. We got 211 spaces, of which it's just been reduced by these. So this parking thing is, is the issue. Now in addition, here are the items that were referred to as changes to the final development plan, but this is my analysis of the changes to the final development plan with what is different between the two plans that were presented. And let me state that mixed-use development requires, if there is a 10% change to the plan, you have to go back through the entire process, which I've done as a developer. This is 19 years I've been coming in front of the city council. The building height is increased 20%. It's 83 feet, it was supposed to be 69. Final development plan was approved at 64, it says it's 69, it's actually 83. There's a five-foot setback required on 28th Street. That building is within seven to 20 inches of the adjacent property owner's lot. That should be at ZBA, you gonna move a building and devalue that person's property because he can't build his property that close to it any longer. The removal of the former Wolf Camera building is a 17% reduction in aggregate land that this development's on. You can't move a building 10 feet without coming back through the process. This building's just been eliminated. It's no longer mixed use, it's a hotel. It's all it is now. So the parking reconfiguration, there's the language as it relates, and I'm, do not know, if you city council people know, that his leases do not allow any employees to park on his lot. No employees for the hotel, it's two restaurants, Edgar's, Rodney Scott's and Little Donkey. No one, no, no, no employees per his lease are allowed to park there. They are directed to park at the nearest underground parking public facility. Don't even call it SoHo, but he's giving away his parking for all those people, those employees that don't spend money, to come park at SoHo.
And Mr. Brown, we've given you five minutes, can you?
Yes, so.
Thank you.
Mixed-use requirements say that any covenants, deed restrictions or easements are to be identified on the final development plan. Or in these, this is a recorded easement with Edgar's. It is not on that development plan. And I question whether you council members know that his leases are doing this with the parking. Thank you respectfully.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brown, thank you. Okay, other comments?
Don't start my button yet, I'm getting organized, please.
Okay.
And I also have two handouts. The first handout, which I'm giving, is the worksheet for the certificate of occupancy for the hotel. This is your worksheet to Homewood, if you would pass those for me.
Those are all, they, they're all beside.
Okay, I'd like to start with the city worksheet used to obtain the certificate of occupancy of the hotel. At the top of the page, on the right-hand side, the column starts with maximum occupancy load. That is a, that is a figure that is determined by code and is determined by architects, cities, engineers, et cetera, okay? Just as a side note, when I first reviewed this plan, probably 18 months ago, I noticed, we noticed, my partner and I noticed a mistake. It was originally stated in this sheet, before redone, that there were 2,226 cars required. Now, the city made a mistake. The city made a mistake in their calculations. We suggested their calculations were wrong, which lowered it to 1,695 people that can be on this site at one time. 1,600. Now, here is an analysis, the way the boys do it. And the boys are developers, financiers, bankers, et cetera. If you'll pass these out, I'm probably giving people. This is a summary of the parking requirement for the hotel, as any developer would look at it, in my opinion. And I've been developing 20 years, have done 20 million square feet ground up around the country, and I've also developed a hotel in this city where the city required that I provide, we provide the parking for the hotel in a parking deck, okay? So, let's look at this chart right here, and you could start off at the bottom. If you take 26% total occupancy of the hotel, you're required to have, is the only occupancy level that meets your parking condition. Forgetting the cross-parking, y'all didn't vote on cross-parking originally, that I'm aware of, the city council did not. This is something that's come up about how to solve this problem, but here's the problem. If you're at 50% occupied, you're minus 203, based on, hey, this is theaters, this is office buildings, this is any type of retail, there is a mark, a matrix you can use. How many people are coming in the car? Is it one person per car, two people per car, three people per car? So I've done two and three, and I've done, and the biggest one they're worried about is movie theaters because of the density of people. So if you look at this, from 100%, you're down 619 with two people, three people, you're down 339, you can read those. So why in the world would this city council approve a deal that at 50% occupancy, you're down 203? You're, you're minus 203 spaces. The only time you have a positive space is at 26% occupancy of the hotel uses within that hotel. Is it 26%? You're up 69 spaces. If it's 25% occupied, the developer's losing money. I've been in that business before and still in it today. Now, I'd like for you to go to the middle section under zoning review. Mr. Sensiman asked me that I say this to the council, because he said it to the planning commission, and I think he might even said it to the council, got no reaction, zero. Look at the, look at the form. Under there, it says, side setbacks, 2.3 million, 2.3 million, geez, I'm in the wrong business. 2.3 feet. Anything less than five feet, yes. Do you know that the northeast corner of the building is 21 inches from a man's property line? He had a survey, 21 inches. Doesn't affect the hotel because it's there, but this man cannot develop the density on his site because he's gotta have a setback. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a seven inch difference between the hotel rear and the man's parking, and the man's property. Seven inches. Didn't call him, didn't tell him that's what he was gonna do, didn't say, oh my gosh, we didn't build it the way the plans were supposed to be built, so we've encroached on your parking, nothing. He had to come in here and beg for answers, and guess what? Zero. No answers. And I guess I identified, I've already identified, under that same thing, the height, 64 is approved, then it was 69, and the building vertical height is 83 feet. 83 feet. Do you think everybody in the city of Homewood wants to know why there's a 19-foot difference and y'all don't care? Don't care a bit. Because we have been coming here for two years telling this city council and planning commissions what the heck is being done wrong and not being followed. And every time we get here, somebody's figured it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, and by the way, never in my career have I ever had a building sign approved by a city council before I showed them what the elevation looks like and what the sign looks like. And if you approve that, you've lost your mind.
Thank you.
On top of an 83-foot building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other comments? Okay. Hearing none, we will officially close the public hearing. Okay, are there any comments from the council?
Yeah, the first comment I'd like to make, as much fun as that was, is that every business owner in downtown Homewood is encouraged to ask their employees to park in the public parking below City Hall, every last one of them. In fact, they come to us when they do that. I'm not, this is not a discussion with you.
Listen, we are not going to have comments from the back. Do you understand me? We will not, we have had a public hearing. I gave you time to speak. We're not going to speak at all from the back, okay? The, the whole point of a public hearing is you have your time to speak, but it's not, no, you're not, no, no, okay? So we're, we're finished, okay? We're gonna, this is the time for comments from the council, and so that's what we're gonna do. Okay, Ms. Andrews, will you continue? Okay, so other comments from the council?
I find that what's there.
Yep, Mr. Hard.
Between what it was is an incredible improvement for our city. So I appreciate the improvement and the risk that was taken to do that improvement.
I agree with that 100%. And I would like to thank Mr. Moran for investing in Homewood, for improving in Homewood. I think what Mr. Harden is referring to is all of the improvements that have been made in the surrounding businesses. I work at 2709 Mamie L. Foster, I've been there since 2013. That, that building looks as pretty as it's ever looked. All the occupancy that's going on around there, that is a direct result of the investment that you have made on that corner, and the city is better because of it, and we thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
I just echo those same comments. I think we're seeing good things happening. I think we're seeing restaurants that are full, I think we're seeing adjacent properties being renovated and upgraded, and I think it, it looks, I think it looks wonderful. And I've taken people to eat and enjoy drinks at the hotel, and I think my, the resounding opinion I've had from people in town and out of town have all been positive. And after two years of lodging taxes that bottomed out for us, in the amount, small amount of time that that hotel has been open, I believe, we're at about half a million dollars in lodging taxes. So I think when you bring half a million dollars into a city, that's a pretty big investment, and I'm appreciative of that, to be honest.
Okay, Mr. Sims, who's next?
Yes, thank you, Councilor Jones. I just, actually I have a couple of things, but first of all, I just wanted to ask Mr. Pugh if he would mind addressing the comment in relation to the adjacent property and the change from 2.3 feet, I believe it was, to a setback of seven inches. I just want to make sure that that concern was addressed as far as the, what the regulations call for in that situation.
Okay, the, the foundation survey that was provided to me showed a two-foot setback. However, the original development plan proposed a five-foot setback due to some mechanical appurtenances. They had a jut out, a build out on the back for a part, for a portion that brought the setback to two feet. The zoning ordinance does allow an administrative approval of up to 10 feet in any direction. So a three-foot adjustment for some mechanical, for a mechanical wall was not outside of the realm of reason.
So, so to clarify then, because it's mixed use in those regulations, it was an administrative approval at that level of change, and, and that was, that was how it was approved?
That's correct.
Administratively, okay. And, and it's seven inches, obviously, from the adjacent property line. And it's seven inches, obviously, from the adjacent property line. There's no actual crossing over the adjacent property line, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. And if the adjacent property owner rezoned their property to mixed-use, they would have the same regulations apply, is that correct?
That's correct. They would have to get a development plan approved.
Sure. But, but I'm just saying that would be, I mean, they would, they would basically have the same opportunity with that zoning, that's what it allows, once granted.
If you're referring to whether or not they would, they could move their building three feet one way or another, if need be, yes.
Okay. And then, a follow-up question I had for Mr. Maron is, you referenced these agreements with the shared parking with Edgar's and Little Donkey and so forth, and you're referencing the available parking, does that include the, within the perimeter off-street, that is the onsite parking for the hotel?
The off-street parking that's along 18th Street is counted in the 211, which was always part of it. So, I want to...
So, I guess I was just wondering, you said there's reference to Edgar's, Little Donkey, and Rodney Scott's, being able to use those spaces when available, is that correct?
I have no control over the public parking off of 18th Street. I'm talking about the parking, in the parking lot behind the hotel.
So, the 118 onsite at the hotel?
I'm sorry.
The 118 spots right here?
Edgar's has a right to park on, if not used by the hotel, on 20-something spaces down the edge of their, where their building is. Rodney Scott and Little Donkey, if not used by the hotel, have a right to park in the parking behind them. But the hotel, but the parking is controlled by the hotel.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, honestly, I mean, from my looking at it, you know, any, the flexibility in parking is good, because if those parking spaces were for hotel-only and left vacant, then that would only put further strain, further on 18th. For example, if I'm staying at the hotel and I park in front of, say, Holler and Dash, because I just got in and ate breakfast, then I walked over the hotel, I mean, it's good to have some flexibility in parking, because, and so by doing those lots that way, and not as restrictive, I think that's a benefit overall, to have more in the mix. So, I just wanted to clarify that. And then finally, could you clarify the comment made about the lease and that employees are required to park in, in public parking?
Yes.
Or, tell me more about that.
Counselperson Andrews said, "In my lease with the hotel, and the lease with Edgar's and Little Donkey and Rodney Scott, I require that the employees park in public parking under City Hall, which is where the public parking exists." And I do that for the very reason that you said and other people have said, and I think many people, I think...
This is a sham. This is a sham. It's unbelievable.
Sound like a shim wow.
I believe that the city has encouraged other employers to have their employees park in that area in order to free up the more convenient spaces for customers.
Not required.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, I guess eventually, you know, we'll have to look at open public parking. So, I think as you, as we look at development going forward, we definitely need to think about the parking for these businesses and continuing to have space for that, because that's going to be an important part of the city as we grow. And so, anyone who has future developments, I think we need to include that as part of public parking, and, you know, I don't know if we need to come up with some type of system of, you know, some type of shuttle or something, but we definitely need to keep that in mind going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will mention without screaming from the back of the room that Andrea Snyder of Urban Cookhouse actually had required her employees to park under City Hall. They could not work for Urban Cookhouse if they were found parked anywhere else than under City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Any comments from down here?
I just had one more question related to the information that was provided tonight, and I don't know if this is from Mr. Maron or Mr. Pugh, but is the hotel building, in fact, 20 percent higher than the development plan allows?
The building is actually 69 point, 69 feet, 2 inches tall. I'm not sure where the 83, that, I think there was an old, there was a typo on one of the old plans floating around that had 83 in one place, but no, it's been corrected, and it is 69 feet, 2 inches tall. And it is on the plans before you.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Walt?
I think one of the things that's a success in the whole project, the whole project's a success as it is, but one thing I'll add, to me, is especially important in tight parking situations like we have in Homewood, when you have uses that are during the day for, like, a restaurant, and when a hotel needs the property at night, the restaurant might not be as full, those kinds of shared parking agreements are what we need to be doing in the city. We don't need to be paving over every single lot that we have to put up parking. We tried to go down this road with some other developments on Central Avenue, and some of the property owners over there weren't as receptive to doing this, but this is the way it should work. So, that's all I had to add, is kudos.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll just add a couple of quick comments, and it's really that I don't, I don't believe we've had complaints about parking. I mean, it's one thing if the hotel had just opened, but we have a history here that we've not had, you know, parking issues. Secondly, I think it's a great, it's a great development. I mean, it, you know, there's, we can always do better, but I feel very confident, I'm excited about the project. I've had many friends come in from different cities, and they tell me just how proud they are to see that, and I like the development. I really do, and I feel like we have accommodated everything that we've needed to accommodate. So, I'm excited about it, so I want to move forward on approving the final development plan. So, with that, we're going to have, before we have any other comments, okay?
I'll just say briefly that, you know, I think that the hotel is good for Homewood. We have the premier hotel in the greater Birmingham area, and that's a good thing, and it's in Homewood. And we're attracting a lot of folks to our downtown. We're attracting more customers. We're attracting more shoppers. We're attracting revenue to our city, and that, these are good things. And I just wanted to highlight the fact that this is an economic success for our city.
Thank you. And I'm sure many people remember, this is a grass strip before, so a lot of that, part of that. So, anyway, Mr. Kendrick, first reading, please.
Yes, there's an ordinance to amend the final development plan for the mixed-use zoning for the property described in section one below, as described in Exhibit A attached here to, as previously approved on the 18th day of September 2017 by zoning ordinance number 2669. Whereas the planning commission of the city has favorably recommended the amendment of the final development plan for the MXD zoning for the property described in section one, as previously approved on September 18, 2017 by ordinance 2669. Whereas the planning commission recommends the development plan attached heretofore as Exhibit B be approved to amend the MXD zoning previously approved. Now therefore, being ordained by the city council as follows, that the final development plan previously adopted by ordinance 2669 for the following described property and the legal descriptions are attached, be in the same as hereby amended pursuant to the development plan attached as Exhibit B. Section two, that from and after the acting of this ordinance by the city council and approval by the mayors otherwise becoming law, that the development plan attached as Exhibit B shall control the uses and restrictions applicable to the property described in section one and heretofore previously zoned MXD by ordinance 2669. Section three, that February 14th was the time and place for the public hearing, which was continued until tonight, at which time all interested parties may be, appear and be heard. Section four, that the city clerk has given notice of the time and place of the public hearing on February 28, 2002 to all owners of property located as required by law. Section five, any part of provision, the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or incompetent by a court of competent jurisdiction in all other parts not otherwise affected shall remain in full force and effect. Section six, that the ordinance shall become effective meeting upon its passage, approval by the mayors otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
Same.
Second.
By Mr. Alamon. Second by Ms. Andrews. Your call roll, please.
Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Naums?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
And Counselor Harden?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, 10 to zero. That passes, that's ordinance 2827.
That was unanimous consent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would make a motion for approval.
28, right?
Second.
That was unanimous consent.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Hold on, hold on. I asked for unanimous consent. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Alamon again, Ms. Andrews.
It was Alamon or Waltney?
It was Waltney.
Waltney?
Waltney. Alamon and I said at the same time.
Okay.
Waltney, Alamon?
Yeah, Waltney and Alamon.
Okay. All righty. Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Naums?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be my only, okay, that's my only mistake of the night. Thank you, Mr. Harden. 10 to zero, so that, it's ordinance 2827.
Oh, okay.
So, thank you for that, and I apologize for my mistake. Okay, next, we, wouldn't you know, we have one more public hearing. So, and when y'all see council president, just let him know how much fun we had. 260122.
Well, I told him how much we were going to have a seat in that chair tonight.
Yeah, he's...
I do love a good yelling.
At 260122, a public hearing set for tonight, condemnation of a dwelling structure at 1681 Ashwood Lane. Mr. Pugh.
Yes, sir. Very quickly, I'll give you a little history. The Homewood Housing Code Abatement Board voted to...
Hold on one second. Let's get the report from Planning and Development. I apologize.
No, not for me.
No, no report, okay.
Okay. The Homewood Housing Code Abatement Board voted to refer 1681 Ashwood Lane to city council for a determination whether the townhouse should be condemned as a public nuisance. The conditions that the board cited that as unsafe were, one, signs that the front wall is decaying from the inside behind the siding. They noted that repairs that were needed to stop water from entering the wall went unaddressed, to the point that a portion of the exterior wall siding fell off. The hole in the exterior wall has remained open to the elements for a long period of time. Number two, they cited signs that repairs that were needed to stop water from entering the chimney box on the rear of the house went unaddressed, to the point that interior damage reached the outside, as evidenced by holes that have appeared in the envelope and remain open to the elements. Number three, they cited that the deck shows signs of wood rot due to neglect, and the eaves show some of the same. And number four, they cited that the roof showed signs of shingles missing and coming loose, indicating that water leaks originating from the roof may be the cause of much of this damage. Since this item was sent to council, the owner has installed a new roof. So, that is an update there.
Okay. And hold on one second.
And, Robert Jones, can I ask you too, though, I put it to the wrong committee. It was actually sent to Public Safety, so I was just going to read your report.
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah. Could I get a report from Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. President. The committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Jones and seconded by Counselor Naums.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open up the public hearing. And are there any comments from the public?
I live adjacent to the townhome in question. That number is 1681, and I live one townhome east of that one. Okay, the problem is that, and I've been there about 34 years, and over the past 20 years, the townhome in question has been in a severe state of deterioration over that entire time. And we've tried to reason with the owner about repairs and reach, no, nothing. So, anyway, as you've seen by the pictures, there's serious code violations and deficiencies in that townhome. There are even more things going on there. There's a large hole in the back wall above the door, and there's a fireplace that's very heavy, that rests on the deck surface, and if it rots any further, it could fall through. Very heavy piece of equipment. It could fall on a gas line there, it's pretty heavy. Also, the siding is all fallen down on the deck. All that remains in many places is bare tar paper. Even that is crumbling and beginning to fall down everywhere. The windowsill has fallen off the window entirely. I've seen, there's a hole that goes, if you're facing the townhome from the front, there's a gutter on the right side of the staircase, stairwell, stair entrance there, that has eroded a hole in the basement foundation itself. From the outside, at night, you could see a light on in the basement, so that's how big the hole is. I've seen rodents go in this hole several times, and I've seen, even saw in the back, I've seen a snake in the leaves that were not picked up over a long period of time. The hole itself is pretty large and is, was caused by erosion. So, I feel like that this process has been gone on, going on for way too long, so it's time that something needs to be done to correct the situation. I don't know exactly what you might do, or anyone can do about it, but I feel like that if it reaches a state of condemnation, that someone may have better ideas about it, or have at least put a foot in the right direction to get this townhouse in a state that's, can be, you know, remedied. So, I feel like that it can be taken care of under the right circumstances. I feel like the house of the townhome is repairable if it is caught in time enough. So, I believe we're reaching, rapidly reaching that point. So, I really feel like that it should be condemned, and I ask your favor in making the motion to condemn the structure, so something can be done to move forward from this point.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Yes, question?
Uh, Mr. Terrell, does the owner actually live in the unit, or is it...
Does he own or live there?
Does the owner live there?
The owner lives there.
Okay. You said the person is in, it's not occupied.
It is occupied.
Okay. And Mr. Pugh, you know, if, when we do condemnations of houses, that's one thing, just that we can go in and eliminate them, because they don't affect anybody else's property. What happens in this situation when it is an attached townhouse, how does that work exactly?
I wish I had a better, clearer answer for you about that. I don't know what cities do in situations like this. I mean, the city's not going to go in and... I mean, the city's not going to go in and remodel the place. So a condemnation would be an unusual, unusual thing.
Could it possibly trigger?
We couldn't, couldn't we condemn it and then go in and at least get it so that it's dried in, I'll use the term, so that, so that, and then put a lien against him so that there's not, water's the dan, water's causing the problem, I'd say generally.
This being, Kendrick, Mr. Kendrick.
Well, the statute that we're acting under is called the Unsafe Building Act. It's a state code. And what the remedy is demolish.
But it's a, it's a townhome with two townhomes.
Well, I understand that, but that, they have a private cause of action against this property owner, more so than a public problem. This is not a public nuisance, in my opinion. It's a private nuisance.
But if it is, if it is declared unsafe, then condemned, might that trigger action on some other support?
It very well could.
And let's continue. We still have the public hearing open here, so let's, is there, do you have a comment? Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, come on, come forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Terrell.
I'm Roger James. I'm the one that lives in the dump that's falling in. Well, I am. I've let it go and, but I'm trying to do something about it now, as I get the money. I don't, you know, have an abundance of money sitting on my kitchen table that I can have it fixed. But there's no water coming into my house.
But you have put on a new roof.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Do you plan to do more?
And of course, as I get the money, I'm doing more, and I am guilty because I have let it go. I've been negligent. And it needs to be totally redone, as I'm fixing to do. But I can only do so much, you know, money just goes so far. But there's no water pouring into my house or anything.
Yeah, that, I don't think that's the issue. It's really just an awareness.
It looks bad.
Yeah, and, you know, I used to live at sixteen oh-one, and my next door neighbor kept the most beautiful yard and, and, you know, we, we all, you know, kept up our property. So it's just a matter of pride.
Well, I kept it up too.
Yeah, because your property affects.
I've had some health problems, but that's no excuse. But as far as the hole in the drive-it, the drive-it has got to be replaced on the front of that place, but the neighbors have knocked hole and they pulled the insulation out to make it look worse than it is. But I mean, it does look bad, and I'm trying to correct the problem. But, you know, I can't have it done tomorrow. It's going to take me a little while to do it. So if you want to condemn it, that's fine too. If you want to blow it up, blow her up. I've got insurance. Well, I just want to tell you, I have insurance. If you want to blow it up, blow her up.
How about the, the places that are opened? They mentioned the hole to the basement. It seems like that would be something that could be.
Where is there a hole to the basement?
I, I.
I haven't seen one.
Okay, I just was listening to what Mr., what your neighbor said, that there was a, there was a hole that he could see a light from the basement.
Well, I don't see how he sees the light because there's no lights in my basement at night. And, you know, I don't see a hole. I don't know where a hole is in my basement.
So I think maybe, I haven't been to the property now in probably six or nine months, but I've been to your property to see the condition of it. And you're correct, it is in need of dire repair.
Absolutely, yeah.
And while I do understand your concern about having money and I empathize with that situation, it's been twenty years, and it takes a long time to get to the state that it's in. So I think you could have been doing maintenance up to this point.
Of course I could have. Certainly, absolutely.
I would not trivialize the concerns of your neighbors, whether it's a hole or your fireplace potentially coming loose from your house and falling. I've seen these things, and they are big issues over there, and I think they do have very valid concerns, so much so that we should condemn the property to ensure that you're moving forward with repairs, because if someone's walking by and that fireplace falls and causes your deck to fall in the street, you're going to have bigger problems than repairing some siding. You're going to have legal issues to contend with.
Well, they shouldn't be around my house if that, if it's in that.
So your neighbors, your neighbors aren't allowed to walk behind your house?
Really, they shouldn't be walking.
Is it, let me ask you a question. Is it a street that people can drive on?
Yes.
That's an alley where they can go trash in the back. Okay.
Sir, do you have any answer for us? We're sitting up here trying to make a pretty tough decision for your place.
Well.
And we usually tell someone, we'll give you thirty days to make a change. Are you open to that?
Well, I'm making changes, you know, right now. I'm making changes, but it can't be done tomorrow or the next day. You know, but I, you know, I'm having to do a little at a time.
I guess the concern is that it's taken a long time for it to get in the state. I'm sure the neighbor's concern is that the time will march on and things won't get done.
No, things are being done. I just had a new roof put on, so is that, that showing you that I am beginning to do something?
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, just thinking about this, Mr. James, so you've begun doing something with the roof. You know, as far as next steps and accountability, you know, what do you think would, would help you stay on track? I mean, do you need additional help or support in some way? And what do you think would help you, you know, reach everyone's goal here of, you know, relieving the public nuisance, which is, you know, you have open, open, an open structure, which is a nuisance because somebody could crawl inside and, you know, a child could be out crawling inside your house or something.
Where is the open?
You've got.
Where is the?
You've got.
Is the open?
The gas, the gas line, which could be, you know, an issue. So I guess, what do you, what is, lay out your plan to us as far as how, I mean, is this something where you're, you're wanting to work collaboratively with others or to expedite this timeframe? What are you looking at?
I've already contacted a builder to, you know, he has given me a thirty-two thousand dollar estimate on putting a new deck and redoing the back. I've got to find someone to remove the drive-it off of the front and put a new front on this.
So obviously, it's hard to do all of it once. So, so, I mean, do you have a prioritization of those improvements so that we make sure that the ones that are most imperative get done first? I mean, like, the roof was a good place to start, but what's your next step? What, what project are you going to do next?
I thought, I was thinking the rear, replacing the lumber on the rear and the deck. But, you know, I'm doing the best I can timeframe-wise in getting people out there to do it. That's another thing. This builder had me on like a three-month waiting list, so, but.
Okay.
What, what do you expect me to do? What would you expect me to do?
I mean, I think at this point, you need a, a plan with a timeframe of how to alleviate the issues that are the immediate concerns, health and safety being first, and then cosmetic for sure, within a given timeframe and working in partnership with the city.
Well, health and safety first. What, what is that, does that include?
Why don't you provide some guidance here? I mean, what's the most unsafe portion? Is it the, is it the back?
Well, health and safety pertains to anything that would be a danger to the occupants or to the public. Now, in this case, you've got open to the elements. The building envelope is open to the elements. In other words, pests of all sorts can get in through the holes.
They could get in, but they're not getting.
Okay. Well, if they were to do that, that would be, that would be something that would be considered dangerous.
So the rear, where I'm considering, I'm going to take care of first, that would alleviate that problem?
If that's the only hole, there's a hole in the front also, I believe, correct?
Yeah, where the neighbors have knocked that drive-it in, which you could blow on it and the drive-it would fall.
Okay, hold on, hold on. I'll give you a chance to speak, okay?
Yeah, so it looks worse.
I, I know. Hold on a second. Go ahead.
I mean, and they pull the insulation out so it looks worse than what it is. But the drive-it, you can just touch it and it just breaks.
Okay.
That's the way drive-it does.
Okay.
You could take some lumber and put that there while you're waiting on it.
Of course I could.
It's not very hard.
No, sir. I could do that.
And Mr. James, I think the frustration that you're seeing is the fact that I'm looking at the history on this, and I've known about this from concerns from your neighbors for at least three years. There's records here in front of me from the abatement board taking this issue up almost two and a half years ago, where you were contacted and did not respond to certified letters. I know your neighbors have left letters on your doorstep asking you to do improvements. Why have you, why, why did it take us going to this extent to get you to show up, to do this? Why does it take us getting to this procedure to get you to replace your roof and start? Why did you not start already? Why, you, you have to see the condition of the house coming to and from.
I just haven't.
You just haven't. So you can't see the hole in the front of your house when you walk in your front door?
Yes, sir, I see it.
Okay.
But I, and I know what happened to bringing my old life.
Your, your neighbor did.
The insulation's ripped out.
I doubt that, but.
Well, you don't have to doubt it. I know. I lived there.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay, so let's continue the public hearing. So thank, thank you for coming up here. Will it?
Is that all?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be all for right now. We might have additional questions. And I know there's a lot of emotions here, so let's try to just state facts and see if we can come up with a solution. I like Mr. Sims' approach here, methodical approach, to coming up with a plan. And that's really what we're looking for here, is some type of action plan. Because there is a lot of frustration, so.
I'm sorry for the outburst, but my name is Ronald Hendershot. I live next to the property that is being considered for condemnation. I live at sixteen eighty-three Ashwood Lane, and that is the property next door. I live with Mr. Charles Terrell, who spoke earlier. And this has been going on for two and a half years. We have approached, Mr. Terrell has approached Mr. James concerning the condition of his property. And this dates back to before it was presented to the abatement board in probably the fall of 2019. And then Rick Thames was the council member at that time, and we contacted him, and we presented a lot of information, and then eventually that information was presented to the abatement board. And starting in 2020, because of COVID and all that, there was meetings that took place. And this has been going on for, for two and a half years, going on three. And Mr. James has not done anything at all to rectify the problems that exist at that property. It's affecting other people's property, and we have somebody else here with us who lives on Ashwood Lane. And I'm concerned that with the, if this continues and is not addressed, it's going to become a public hazard. We, I don't see kids coming around there, but it could happen that we could, there is a, a new kid that has moved in a few doors down. So that could affect, you know, maybe possibly a kid playing in the back alleyway. And that deck is in total disrepair and could fall down at any time. And Mr. James has not made any effort at all on his part. And he does work, and he does have a very expensive car. He has more priorities than fixing up his property. And I just want to let you know that. And there is, the condition, you can see from the outside that into the basement, there is a crack in the basement, in the foundation of the house where you can look down. When he's down there, you can see the light through. And we know water's coming into his basement. It's got to be. And I know he has fixed the roof. That is a step in the right direction. And I know you have a, a big decision to make in whether to consider the condemnation. But I live at sixteen eighty-three. I've lived there for thirty-four years. And this has been a problem for the last twenty years to see it go downhill. And Mr. James says that we took the stuffing out of his wall. We have not, we don't even go over there. We only touched the basis of it to mow our lawn, but we have not touched any of his property. It has deteriorated over the years. And he's been repeatedly asked by different people years ago to repair that wall and help, but he never dealt, he's never done anything with it. And I believe Mr. James does have the resources. He owns other properties, and he does have the resources to fix that property. Something needs to be done. I'm just a concerned citizen. I love Homewood. I love being in Homewood, and I don't want to move. And I'm considering the other people who live on Ashwood Lane. If that property is not addressed, it's going to affect the property values of all the other people that live on Ashwood Lane. And it's hard to get people nowadays, especially with COVID, to come in our defense. But I, I just had to say something, and I apologize for making an outburst.
No, thank you. No, that's, that's fine. I understand there's a lot, a lot of emotion with it. I know, I know you're frustrated, so no problem.
And this has been going on, Mr. Joe.
Jones, yeah.
Mr. Jones, this has been going on for two and a half years, and something has to be done. The time is now. It can't wait. He's, he had time two, about two years ago in 2020. He did not even make an attempt when he had the chance to make repairs. And he just acts like nothing is going wrong. And the time is now. Something has to be done. I know it's, it's not a, it's not an HOA, but it is a place in Homewood. And I know you pride yourself in Homewood being a good place to live. We have a good school system. I don't have kids, but there's just a lot of good things that I love about Homewood, and I care about where I live on Ashwood Lane. And it sits next to the club, which is a presentable place, and I'm sure no one wants to see a disrepaired property. So I'm recommending, I hope, that you will make condemnation because his history in taking care of things does not show that he's willing to do it. And I know he does have the resources, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, any other comments?
Are you looking for comments from the council of?
Well, it's still public comments, and then we'll, we'll go to you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kay Free. I live on Ashwood Lane at sixteen seventy-three. Most of the townhouses there are developed with an eight-unit plan. They've been developed by different people over the years. It has not been a one-suite development. It's had multiple developers. The street is half Birmingham and half Homewood. That leads to a number of problems and issues right there. I moved there as a primary owner when it was built, moved in in August of nineteen eighty-seven. My home has not always been pristine and perfect either. As a single mother finishing graduate school and a son who's finishing high school, who chose Homewood out of all the other schools in the area when we came from Mobile to go to high school. There are things that we like about it. I was going into a position with Children's Hospital where I needed to be available to be on call. I was also doing graduate work at Tuscaloosa Campus of the University. This was the perfect setting for us, for him to be able to get to school, me to get to work, face the responsibilities that I had. It was not all the space we. It was not all the space we were used to or anything else, but it was a beautiful development that people did have a great deal of pride in. And over the years, with a very, very few exceptions, that's still the case, there's not a one of us that doesn't get at least ten offers from realtors every day wanting to buy the properties. There's a lot of action going on over there right now, a lot of traffic through there, and of all the units up and down that street. This is the one exception. It does have holes in the dwelling that lend property to stray animals going in. We have things, possums, raccoons, other things that come across from the woods. Some people say they've seen coyotes. I haven't. But we do take care of our properties as much as possible and within the means that we have. We try to keep them attractive. We try to keep them maintained so that everything is in order. And we do take a lot of pride in our street. And this really came out during the pandemic as the street took on an additional aspect of neighborliness. No one's out to punish anybody on the street, point fingers or anything like that. But we do feel like that it, that everyone should pull their own weight in keeping things maintained, keeping things presentable, keeping them safe. We spoke of children, other people not going, people being up around the properties close. Well, the gas meter person has to go to the back of the property to read the meter. What happens when he's the one standing under the deck when it falls? There are other people that have to encounter. There have been issues most recently, I've not had them, but others have, with claiming property lines and delivery of day-to-day postal service. Many, many communications have gone out to this resident. To my knowledge, this is today's response. I think it's about the first time I have seen him take action and respond. On one Zoom meeting, he did come on with us, but to my knowledge, he never responded to certified letters. He never responded to other neighbors who offered to help out, seeing that he maybe needed a hand. He did get a new roof on over the Christmas holidays, which we were most appreciative of. We have a delightful little young couple that's moved in next door, who've probably themselves done every piece of work that could be done in a unit. There are people in every trade, building trade, repair work, whatever, that have shown up on a daily basis. We can hardly get up and down the back drive a lot of days or park in front of our houses because of so much action that's going on over there with people maintaining, improving, flipping, if you want to call it that, properties, taking pride in them, trying to move things forward. We have put a good three-years' effort into getting to this point tonight.
Thank you so much.
And I feel like it's time that, that something needs to happen. We're not trying to be vindictive, but we do feel like we have a right to expect others in our neighborhood to maintain a similar standard and stance that the rest of us do.
Thank you so much.
I think that's only fair.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your comments. Okay, any other comments from the public? I will close the public hearing. Ms. Gere.
Yes, I was just going to ask Mr. Pugh. Mr. Terrell mentioned code violations in his discussions. And I wonder if you could fill us in on any specific code violations that have been noted related to the property?
Well, the Property Maintenance Code has numerous unsafe conditions that it cites. And I think those are probably the code violations that he's speaking to. The main one has to do with the water, the water damage that I believe was coming in because of the, the roof. The roof was pretty bad originally. That has been replaced. Now, the damage is done in a lot of places. You have holes in the building envelope. That's certainly also a violation as it allows pests and the elements to come into the inner walls. Those are probably the two, the two main ones I would cite.
Okay, and the, the city or the, the, the board, that, the Abatement Board, have they deter, determined this or declared this an unsafe structure? Has that been officially?
Yes, yes. They voted to declare it an unsafe structure. And what that triggered was for me to send out a notice of unsafe structure, and that was sent out.
And question for Mr. Terrell. Or is, are any of the issues causing any, any kind of water damage or anything on your particular unit? Is there anything going on in your unit as a result of the, the issues that you're, we're here talking about?
Well, as far as water damage goes, if you're facing a townhome, there's been a new roof put on, but if you look up on top of the little eve over the entranceway, there's a large crack between the roof of the entranceway to the drippet on the right side. So that crack is going to allow water, comes right straight down somewhere, you know what I mean? So.
That's the one on the screen, brother.
Yeah.
That, that's his front door, isn't it?
That's Mr. James' front door.
Above there or to the right there, that crack line there where it's like this at that angle, where the roofing material is adjacent to the drippet, okay, right through there. Is he there?
But that, is that, is that Mr. James's front door, or is that?
Sorry?
Yeah, that's his front door.
But that is the entrance to the door. And to the right is the big hall that everybody's been going over, you know, for the past three years, obviously. Now, above that, above that gutter, where it's an elbow there, there is a right angle that's to the right above that end of the gutter. Right with the roof is adjacent to the drippet.
Okay, I was just wondering if there's anything active going on in your unit as a result of any of, okay.
As far as an intrusion to the adjacent townhouse,
Okay.
that has not occurred yet, I'm aware.
Okay, and have y'all ever attempted an HOA for your, your set of, block of eight units?
A long time ago, a fellow tried to get it going, but no one wanted to do it, so.
Okay.
That's out of the question.
Okay, I think that's all my questions right now. Thank you.
Then there may be water intrusion, there probably is, from the back deck going into this fireplace area. And also where the window sill has fallen off, there's a gap there where it's probably water running down there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council?
I was just going to add some detail from Mr. Pugh's timeline. Mr. Pugh, wherever you are, behind the flag there. Thank you very much for this detailed report. So he mentions in here that this came to our attention as a city in 2019. I'm pretty sure I heard about it before that. And the concerns were that they were concerned with deterioration, that the siding had fallen off. There was rotten deck, holes in the wall, et cetera, that were going to allow intrusion. I do remember seeing the property sometime in that timeframe. But it was on the agenda for the Abatement Board for seven different meetings from 2024. And of those seven meetings, I can see where he was, the owner was present at one. So I think that's indicative of the seriousness that's being, or the care that's being given to this issue. This was just turned over to us on February first from the Housing Code Abatement Board after no response from the previous two meetings. So I, I think that the correct motion here would be to condemn this property so that we can seek, or at least help seek a method for getting it remedied for the neighbors so they do not have to continue to suffer from the neglect.
Okay, Mr. Waltney, that's your motion to vote for condemnation?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Smith. All right, any other comments, questions?
I just have one follow-up question for, for Mr. James. Mr. James, you know, it was, it was remarked that the roof was done over Christmas. So that's, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, so that's been three months. What's the next project on your list, and when's that getting done?
Hopefully, hopefully the back.
Okay. See, I just want you to understand, we need more than a hopefully. You need to be taking this serious. I mean, you should have.
Well, I'm taking it serious.
And, and that's what condemnation is going to do. It's going to put you on a timeline to get these projects done so that your structure can remain in place. So, I mean, am I accurate in that? I mean, there's going to be a timeline to meet compliance?
Thirty days, but Mr. Pugh has some, I think, discretion in that, correct?
Thirty days.
Okay, so, so currently you don't have another project lined up with a contractor at this time?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of said motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed by the same sign?
No.
Opposed?
I'm a no.
Okay, okay, so that passes eight to two. I want to make sure I've captured the, the two, okay. So eight to two, that passes.
Fill us the second opposition. Got Carlos Alamon.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, let's see, let's keep going here. Oh five oh two twenty-two, public hearing set for March fourteenth, hallelujah, for consideration of front yard fence variance. We're going to carry this over pending the public hearing on March fourteenth. Without objection. Oh six oh two twenty-two, public hearing set March fourteenth for consideration of ordinance to adopt 2021 building codes. We're going to carry this over pending the public hearing on March fourteenth. Oh seven oh two twenty-two, public hearing set for March fourteenth for consideration of ordinance to adjust building permits and fees. That is going to be carried over for the public hearing on March the fourteenth. And the two items, let's see, from Finance, zero two zero five twenty-one, request to consider replacement of train chiller for City Hall Building. We have a report from Finance, Councilor Smith.
Yes, the committee met right before council meeting and set, requested to set a bid date for the new train, to send out a request for proposals and then set a bid date for April fourth, 2022, at four thirty with bids opening at four forty-five. We're also going to keep the item on the Finance agenda so that we can then address the, the cost when it becomes available.
Okay, thank you for that report from Finance. Is there, are there any questions or comments about said report?
Sorry, that was me. I made the motion, Robert, and John Harden seconded it.
Okay. It's moved by, it's coming from Finance. It doesn't require a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. That's ten to zero. In passing. Is that a, that's not a resolution, is it?
I don't think so.
No. Was the, okay, was the condemnation a resolution? It was, it.
I'm sorry.
We don't really have.
Yeah, it's a resolution. It's twenty-two thirty-five.
Twenty-two thirty-five.
Twenty-two thirty-five?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so next we have zero two zero two twenty-two, request for consideration of FY twenty-one twenty-two budget amendments. Mr. Brigat and a report from Finance, Mrs. Smith.
Yes, Mr. Brigat presented us with budget amendments, and we made a motion, I made a motion, and Mr. Alamon seconded it, and we voted four to zero to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Good, thank you for that, Mrs. Smith, reported from Finance, unanimous. Any questions, comments on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed by the same sign. That's ten to zero, passing Resolution twenty-two thirty-six. And then zero four zero one twenty-two, request to add public parking at the old Homewood Police Station on Twenty-Ninth Avenue South in the Bay. A report from Finance.
Yes, the committee met and voted fi, four to zero with, I think I made the motion, and Mr. Alamon seconded it. And we also had a, one of the budget amendments was money that was going to be used to remove the fuel tank, the existing fuel tank that is on site, so that that parking can be used. So that was four to zero coming out of Finance.
Thank you. Thank you for that report. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. That passes ten to zero. And then we've got twenty-two oh one twenty-two, request for consideration of Forest Brook Traffic Calming Project at Forest Brook Drive from Forest Brook Circle to West Oxmore Road via Shades Glen Drive and Del Chris Drive, coming to us from Public Safety. So do we have a report from Public Safety?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pre, yeah, I am on. Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met earlier this evening and voted three to zero to move this forward to council.
Can I just, I'm going to ask a question real quick.
Sure.
Because I thought about this. If y'all had any desire for the neighbors to come, we have committees next week.
I, I think that this has been on the radar for six months. We've been getting emails and phone calls about moving on this, and this is a solution.
Okay, but it's going to be the same night anyway. We're going to vote on, we're not going to vote on it till this board.
But they had the opportunity to come today if they had wanted to come at committee, so I would just prefer to keep it on council. We could, thank you.
Okay, so we'll carry, we'll carry, carry this item over without objection for.
So just curious, when we're not voting on it, it's night?
No.
Why not? I mean, if it's on the council agenda tonight, why are we holding it over until the week?
We're waiting because we had talked to Kell Smith, and he had wanted to present something a little bit more.
Yeah, the motion was just to put it on the council agenda to have it for our next meeting.
But if we have a presentation from Kell, should it not be in committee? That, that would be the appropriate place for a presentation from Kell, would be committee.
I'm, I'm, I'm going with the sponsors of, of this particular item, which is Councilors Alamon and Wolfens. So I'm at your pleasure.
Now, I'm, I'm not, we can leave it here, but the problem is, if you want a presentation, we typically don't do that here for a traffic, I mean, like the last one we did for Forrest, that was covered in committee.
We did end up presenting, yeah, at the full council and showed the placement of the chicanes and whatnot.
No, we're not, no, we wouldn't do that because, I mean, he would present it in, well, I mean, I guess he can show the pictures.
Correct, we presented it at the whole, for the full council.
Yeah, he would just have to show the pictures.
We'd have to have a debate and make changes here if we needed to make changes.
Exactly.
Which normally wouldn't occur.
Correct.
Because we can't discuss it in committee at all because it won't be on the committee agenda.
But we had talked about it in committee, and we had basically discussed that we would do something similar that makes sense at presenting in terms of allowing them to have the discretion to where to put the chicanes. And that's what we're asking for because we, as a matter of fact, don't have the expertise to decide where exactly they should go. So it's going to have to require some latitude presented to Kell Smith, and that's what he's going to talk about. That's where we're going to have it. Okay. I will, I will say, if you want to open it up, there are some people that, that have talked about more speed bumps, so, you know.
All right, well, we're going to carry this over on the council agenda here. So that'll come under old business next time. Okay, committee, did I miss anything? Hopefully I didn't. Committee referral agenda, do I have a motion to approve that? I move my Mr. Sims, second of Mrs. Nelms. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed by the same sign. That's ten to zero approval. Moving on to other new business. Fifteen oh two twenty-two, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a secondary front yard fence variance at two twelve Broadway Street, David Kenman. Let's see, the recommendation I think would be to set the public hearing, or no, for March fourteenth. So I think we would need a motion to set that public hearing for March fourteenth.
Would make a motion to set the public hearing for three fourteen and refer it to special issues.
Okay. Okay, move Mrs. Smith, second of Mrs. Nelms.
Second, sorry.
And it's already on, it's already going, going there, to special issues. Okay, it's been motioned, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign. That's ten to zero. That passes. Sixteen oh two twenty-two, request authorized mayor to sign an easement for ingress egress at the portion of twenty-seventh Terrace the city previously vacated by Resolution twenty-one. at the portion of 27th Terrace, the city previously vacated by Resolution 21163 by the mayor and Mr. Kendrick.
This, if you recall, we vacated that, that 27th Terrace, but on a condition that Mr. Moran proffered that he would provide an easement for ingress and egress, and this is the easement that has been negotiated, so to speak, but it's an easement that permits for public use of that alleyway, or excuse me, through the easement description, that's been approved and reviewed by the building city engineer, so in order to allow the mayor to sign it, we'd need to authorize his signature for this easement, and this would be conveyed when we receive our money, and when I give them a D, which is when they give us our money that they owe us for the easement. That would be all one transaction that would occur. I think they've sold or are in the process of trying to sell the property across the street to a bank, and now they're trying to move forward with it, so finally we got into an agreement about what the easement language would be.
I would make a motion to allow the mayor, to authorize the mayor to sign the easement agreements for 27th Terrace.
Okay, move by Mrs. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Nelms.
Just to confirm, this is, this is for a public easement, right? I'm sorry.
Yeah, 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 so allow people to use that.
It's, it's an easement from them to the city of Homewood and members of the general public as permetees of the city of Homewood collectively to grantee.
And this is in his property, this is in his property behind Dance Foundation? Is that where we're talking?
Yeah, it's on the other side.
That's what we talked about, so that the neighbors could still be able to cut through, and people could access the street behind.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do with Dance Foundation.
I understand, I just getting my location.
Yeah, yeah, it's there.
Getting proximity. Okay, great, any other questions? Motion seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that's ten to zero for Resolution 2237.
I had six.
Yeah, I had six too.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Well, I had thirty-six.
Oh, for the budget amendments.
Yeah, I'm just, you're right.
Budget amendments, you're on top of it.
Okay, last item, seventeen oh two twenty-two, request for consideration approval vouchers for February 15th through February 28th, with Councilor Alamon, who has been working on that all day.
Yeah, I've been here for a lot of hours at council today. I do always want to say that I do appreciate the opportunity, really has been a great exercise in learning how the money flows, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, move, uh, move by Councilor Alamon, seconded by Mr. Harden. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by the same sign, that's passes Resolution 2238. JJ, you have any comments?
Yes.
Our, our thoughts and prayers are definitely with the mayor tonight, and he was going to come, and I told him not, not to, that he needs to be with his family tonight, and that's what I asked him to do. Do we have any other reports from liaisons? This is typically at the beginning of the meeting, I guess, but are there any liaison reports? I think we've covered enough tonight. Finance will be at five, we probably just, we probably need thirty minutes because we have the transit authority coming, but Mr. Waltney, start with you.
You know, I don't think I'm going to set Public Safety, because the item we have can be carried over for a week, so I will not set Public Safety. The only comment that I have for this evening, Mr. Pugh, while he has left, I was going to, he often sits in a difficult position where he rarely gets any praise, he only gets peppered with questions, I was going to thank him for his detailed report on Ashwood Lane because it was a good report, I don't know if all of council saw that, I just realized the email that went to the committee, did not get to the whole council, I will forward that because it was an excellent report, and it's the kind of stuff that helps us make really good decisions. So, kudos to Mr. Pugh.
I need to be in the way.
I'm sorry?
That needs to be in.
Okay, I'll, I'll forward it.
Good, thank you.
Well, my laptop's there.
Counselor Gear.
Just like to recognize our Ward One Teacher of the Year, one of them, Jeannie Christian, she's a PE teacher at Shades Kahaba, and she lives around the corner, and she's an awesome person, so I'd like to congratulate her. And then Claudia Castellino was the High School Teacher of the Year, she's a Spanish teacher, so just wanted to recognize them, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Alamon.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Halcant Talent Show was a tremendous success, and I want to thank all the teachers, staff, parents who helped put that together, and I'm proud of all our children for showing a lot of courage and talent that night. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Woolerton.
Yeah, obviously echo concerns for, for Mayor McCluskey and his family, and hopefully they are on the mend and healing together. I did want to also thank PAC 386 for the Pinewood Derby this weekend, it's our first time doing that. Sharknado won several races, but ended up seventh overall out of probably about forty or forty-five cars. So, it was a fun experience, really enjoyed it, thanks to Raleigh Avenue for continuing to host the meetings and provide the space. And, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
I think you had something.
Was there something new?
I think there's a, I think there's a mic.
Yeah, so we'll, I guess we'll set that.
Right after finance.
For right after finance, yep.
That'll be right after finance, yep. Okay, Counselor Sims.
Thanks, Counselor Jones, and thank you for chairing this meeting tonight, I really appreciate you stepping in and doing that, you did a great job, it was a lot to handle. I just wanted to remind everybody that the stormwater master plan comment period is coming to a close, this, Kale and the department hosted some meetings middle of the month, but those comments can still be submitted via email in the office, or, or via the public engagement tool they've created through March. I, I asked Kale earlier if that was closing March 1st, if it will continue into the month, and he said it will continue into the month some, and I encourage everybody who has a comment to please submit it via those tools and methods available, because we, we've received a lot of comments recently about stormwater issues after events, and it's just important for all that information to be incorporated in the plan, so please remember that those are good ways to submit your feedback, if, you know, unfortunately, you know, we don't have staff to glean through Facebook and other social media formats for all the comments, so please submit them through the methods provided, because we really want to make sure that we have everybody's feedback, that's the best way to come up with a great plan. The beautification board has set a date for April 9th to have a creek cleanup along Griffin Creek, so hope to see some of y'all out there, and please help spread the word, I'll, I'll send some email, an email with further information so that anybody who wants to volunteer can participate. Also, Carolyn, you win the commitment award for staying through this long meeting, you know, we, we've had some talks about community recently, and sometimes we're not always, you know, on the same sides of issues, but the fact of the matter is, we're all in it together for the betterment of our city, for community, so thank you, Carolyn, for, you know, your, for being here and being part of the public process, appreciate it, thanks.
Here, here. Counselor Smith? No, I'll go last.
I will set special issues for directly after public works, and just want to add my, my thoughts to Patrick and his family, they've been through a lot this past week, and I'm glad that, that they're home from the hospital and able to start that healing process there, because I know it's always a lot easier to be in your own house, in your own space, than it is to be in a hospital room. And I think that is it tonight.
Counselor Nelms?
I left his house today and didn't even see anybody, and I was emotional just because I was glad Braxton was home, because we just have, you know, a preschool all the way up to now history, you know, with my girls and Braxton, and he's just kind of always been kind of like one of my little folks, and so I literally was leaving his house with tears in my eyes and almost ran over Patrick coming up the road.
Please, please, be careful.
Because I couldn't see, but just saying that in, you know, gratefulness and glad they're home, so. Another thing I wanted to mention, as we wrap up Black History Month, I had dinner with high school friends this weekend, and one of them mentioned and brought up a conversation we had probably about a year ago, and in a nutshell, probably as early as first grade, third grade-ish, somewhere in there, I've always heard the comment every now and then, well, why is there Black History Month? Sadly, I'm, you know, able to reflect on that and say, because I didn't even know I was not getting this history until high school. When I walked home from my elementary school, I passed the houses of civil rights icons who are very well-known. Some of them are judges or folks that you guys may know locally, and some of them are friends of mine that I had no idea until I took myself on the Civil Rights Tour as a grown-up and read the signs, and I went, whoa, that's my friend on the sign, his mom was responsible for blah, blah, blah. And it's just important because it wasn't taught as, you know, people from my, part of my culture, giving back, and that's kind of why Black History kind of has its label, because it was just kind of omitted, and I didn't even know that I was not getting it until later in high school, and the high school friend asked me to mention that, she goes, we went to school at a fine arts institution two blocks away from where the Civil Rights Museum is now, and had no clue what went on in that park. Not a clue what went on in the park. I walked home from elementary school having no idea that I was walking past Angela Davis' house, and, Arthur Shores Lee's house, and actually was really good friends with Helen Shore's son in high school, and had no clue what his mom had done, no clue. And so it's just really important, and, and regardless of whether you think it's important, I just wanted to share why I'm grateful for it, and, you know, just in general, while, you know, the impact it's had, and why I'm grateful for, you know, all of our history and how it impacts our lives.
Thank you.
That's all, I know it's a little long-winded tonight, but.
Counselor Andrews.
Well, as I love to say, what happened in Birmingham changed the world, literally changed the world, that, and that park changed the world. And so speaking of things that happened in Birmingham that are going to change the world, I have some fascinating quotes to give you. I had lunch last week with our counselor coalition, and got to hear from Hunter Williams and Darrell O'Quinn about the World Games. Okay, are you ready for this? Speaking of hotels, every hotel in Jefferson County, every single hotel room in Jefferson County is going to be booked from July 7th until July 18th, every one in the county, that this World Games is going to impact our region from Anniston to Tuscaloosa. That's how much of a financial winfall we're going to have, there will be 3,300 athletes, this will be the first international sporting event since COVID that is going to be completely open, we will have federal presence from the Homeland Security, we will have federal presence from the DOJ, the protective stadium will have the opening and closing ceremonies, and in 2025, I think I mentioned this to you guys, in 2025, we will have the police and fire games, which will have three times the amount of athletes, so it is going to be an even bigger impact on our region than the World Games. The USFL will have 44,000 room nights, so 44,000 nights of rooms in this region are going to be impacted by, by the USFL. So, we've got some good things coming our way, so, anyway, and I was going to mention about Coach Christian, I happen to, I walk by there usually several times a week, about 6:15 in the morning, and she's always out at the track at like, by 6:30, getting everything out, and this morning she was out there at 6:20 shoveling mud off of the track, and I was like, that's, that's Teacher of the Year right there, 6:20 in the morning, shoveling mud, that's Teacher of the Year. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Andrews.
Oh, did I, did I mention that? I'm sorry, no, I do not need to set P and D, I think my agenda is completely clear, so, yep.
Okay, Mr. Harden.
Mr. Sims stole my thunder a little bit, and being the last one, you always hope that someone will steal your thunder down here, I'm going to switch one day with Mr. Waltney and get the start, but.
Should have done that tonight.
I do appreciate, it was a difficult night, and Mr. Wyatt, I know, wanted to be here, couldn't be here, he's up in the snow in Buffalo, New York, but I appreciate the job you did tonight, wasn't easy. You know, when folks get up and act like what was happening tonight, it, it's a tough place for you to, to do what is right, but at the same time not over, you know, get to the point where we're getting to big shouting matches, so I felt like you did a great job tonight, thank you.
Thank, thank you, I appreciate it, and I certainly would not have had the meeting this long, so I apologize for that, I didn't anticipate it being this lengthy, but thank you for bearing with me, and I appreciate all of your dedication to the council, all your work, I know there's a lot that you do behind the scenes to investigate all of this, so, JJ, did you have anything? Okay, we are, at this point, we're going to adjourn until March 14th meeting, so thank you all.